The time now is 7:50 and we will convene with the rest of the workshop.
Ma'am Chair, what I've got here is the information for more meetings that we've had with the board members since the last work session and some of the requests as far as what are the districts' costs regarding, if we look at various scenarios. So you have a sheet in front of you that looks like this and I've got it up there and I'll walk you through it as we look at each percentage.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I just want to thank you for providing us with this information because I know I asked you for this earlier today. I appreciate you working on this for us.
More closely, more closely. What the impact is showing is based on the study that's been presented and discussed with the board, what those increases would mean as far as the cost. And then we've already got the TASB study that we're using and it made this year regarding the cost line. So what is on the screen right now is the scenario at the 1.5% and the cost for that is at $2,400,000. So one of the discussions that we had with the board members was if we were to look at 2%, what would that cost be and the initial amount. So if we look at strictly not doing the, not looking at the adjustments, but just going off the general pay increase, then the cost goes to $2,401,000 or a difference of $5,300,000 from, again, looking at the GPI from the 1.5. So on your sheet, that's the difference, the cost difference is on line 17, which you have the sheet. Now, when you look at the adjustments, the adjustments are going to go down because as the pay, general pay increase increases, then you have more individuals that are now on the medium. So you don't need as much of adjustments. So the overall increase for a 2% increase, the general pay increase going based on the TASB study, then it's going to cost $470,257.
Let me ask you a question on this one here. So this one here, which is the 2% instead of 1.5%, this is the one that Mr. Hernandez requested, correct, Mr. Hernandez? And this is where the 2% is increased, including the adjustments from TASB. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So all these on here are with either 2%, the 2.5, the 3% and 3.5, including the adjustments from TASB?
Yes, ma'am. And that will be in the column 8. It'll show you what the difference is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ma'am Chair.
I just wanted that clarification. Yes, Mr. Hernandez?
But this does not include the retention stipend, correct, sir?
No, sir. That's part of our choice presentation, the June 1st retention stipend. And again, we based that on what the purpose was in the retention stipend, which gave us that flexibility when the district had resources to do that. So for the last three years, it's been at 750,000. So again, given what the Supreme Court decision came down with, not knowing what the legislation's going to come out with in the spring, it's more of a way to see what's going to happen with the 240,000 after they meet the spring and then see if maybe that could be reinstated again for this '16, '17 year the retention stipend is not.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to allow the people in the audience just to ask any questions because there's a lot of numbers up here, which can get very, very confusing very quickly. But I'm going to see if anybody has a question so far on this slide. Mrs. Gimble?
I wanted to ask, the recommendation, the increase, is that on TASB recommendation on the midpoint or is that as staff?
That's on the midpoint.
On the midpoint.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? That's it. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
And the next area is looking at 2.5%. And so the, again, looking at the difference on the GPI and on your sheet, it's on line 41, of the cost difference. So the cost increases to $2,518, just on general pay, the total amount of $900,000. Again, the adjustments are a bit different than when you compare to the 1.5, $69,000. Overall, the increase of that was at 2.5, is then added $1,500,000. So it's, again, just as we all know, any type of increases are recurring costs. So we know that whichever scenario that we buy the board, we need to make sure we're budgeting for that. So the last two groups that we looked at, then, as far as scenarios, is then looking at 3% of the general pay increase. So when we look at the general pay increase and the amount increase under the 2% is $1,400,000, small reduction to $1,518,000. So a net of an increase of $1,423,000 in extra cost at 3%. The last scenario is at 3.5% and the added cost of the district, the general pay increase is going to, would be $2,130,000, net addition on adjustments of $105,000. And so then an overall increase in additional cost of $1,908,000 over 3.5%.
Okay.
And then, Mr., just some added information that when we had a discussion on the master stipend, $500 and $1,000. Again, Zach was great and Tass was great in providing added information on that. So we asked him, what would be the added cost if we do a $1,000 stipend, $1,000 stipend? That would be an amount of $125,000 total. And if we were to do a $1,500 stipend instead of a $500 stipend, that would be $263,000. So those would be in addition to what's presented.
Okay. You don't have that on any of the...
No, ma'am. This is something that I know that if this thing came up, we did transition first.
Okay, so...
But basically, $500 gets budgeted under the amount that we discussed when the presentation was presented. But if we did a $1,000 stipend, then the added cost would be $125,000. And in 2017, it was $263,000.
So $1,000 would be $125,000 more, sir?
Yes, sir.
Let me write that. And if we did $1,500, it would be $263,000.
Yeah. So if we, for example...
We would be able to add that figure to any of these.
Yes. So we would add that to, like, what we're budgeting right now, like, the 2.5% would be $2,400,000. So in other words, we would add to that amount if we did a $1,000 stipend, $125,000 to that. Or if we did $1,500, we would add another $263,000.
Okay. And Mr. Hernandez, just that additional stipend that we give sometimes throughout the year for our teachers, right?
Get it on the...
Oh, we're talking about the masters?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. Hernandez, when we come back on the 20th, you have the fund balance trend here according to the first scenario, which is the 1.5%. Could you bring this also with each scenario from there down? Does it have it on this side or on that side? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the one you've just shown. Could you show that fund balance trend at the 2.0, 2.5, 3%?
Yes.
So we'll have that on the 20th also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is change fortune on the June 1st, like, the first slide? So what I'll do is I'll...
Okay. I think we have a question. Mrs. Delia?
I have a question. Back on June 1st, you were referring to the $25 million that the state mandates that we have in reserve. Is that correct?
They, what the state recommends, which school districts is to have to have much weight operations.
Okay, okay. So with that said, if, and by all means, I am all for gaining more money. I am all for increasing our wealth. I just, I'm a realist and I really believe in living within your means. Would this hinder us if we were to go above the recommendation that Tassby has made? If we go above the 1.5? And I say that with also asking this. If that were the case and we're going into our fund balance money, will it sustain us? How many years will it sustain us? And I ask this because I was a part of that shade when they closed it down. When they gave us that money back in 2000 and we got those $5 a day raises and we increased our pay. I'm all for that. But then at the expense of shutting down the school. So my question is, will this, since all this money is coming from this fund balance that we have here and we're all supposed to keep so much money, and where will these raises come from?
Keep in mind that, Mr. Hernandez, the recommendations are from our staff and Tassby is doing what our staff is recommending that they do. It's because you said it was a Tassby recommendation, but it's actually a recommendation from our staff.
Right. I'm referring to the 1.5 that I saw.
Right, right.
I didn't see the staff recommendation. We didn't. We all...
No. This recommendation is our staff recommendation. What we're looking at right now, everything that was being presented to us is being presented to us because these are recommendations that our staff has made. Tassby is basically just a liaison who's actually doing the work for our staff. Okay.
I understand. But my question is, where is this money going to come from?
Go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
So when we presented the June 1st, this is based on the 1.5%. So we can see the trend of our fund also '16, '17. At the end of that year, then, we'll have $25 million still set aside and then rushing to $12,700,000. So as our deficit, we continue to have a deficit. We're going to be buying them starting in '17, '18. So that's what we're going to wait and see on what this estate is going to be doing regarding the funding. And so that'll, whatever they decide, that'll be going through here. Depending what kind of funding they provide to school districts, that's going to help offset the projected deficit in years. Again, depending what action is taken to use those extra resources, how they're going to be utilized to try to address the current deficit, that's going to have the impact on the right turn. So the simplest and conservative approach we took without knowing the money we're getting from the state and looking at our ADA, basically, we did at $13,600. If we look at the deficit that we're occurring right now, basically, in '18, '19, we're going into what we've been trying to preserve of the $25 million. We're both going into that for a lot of years. Then after that, in '19, '20, we're going into that for another $6 million. So as you can see, that'll leave us about $17 million in the fund balance and continuing on that trend. And of course, this is the new bionic here. Continuing on that trend probably will be another two years. Again, the uncertainty of what's coming up in spring based on what the state does and as far as funding for public education.
Because the last bionic, or the last time that we received funds from the state was in 2015?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Before the '15, '16.
For the '15, '16 school year. And what was the amount that we received, sir, from the state?
The first amount that we received from them was, I believe, $6 million. And the reason for that jump, and that was for this year that we received it. The way they do their funding formula, it's based on what your property values were on the previous year. So because our property values did a big jump in '15, '16, basically, the state takes back down our budget, now they're basing it on current property jump for this next year, '17. So I think that's just my opinion. So basically, the state is catching up to what they're giving us in funding based on previous years. It's convoluted with the formulas, but that's what it seems. So our budget was built on that. So that way, we knew we were, knew we had resources, but eventually, you know, that's why we shut up.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a quick comment. This is without us receiving any funding whatsoever, right?
Correct.
Okay. So just to make sure that obvious understands, that we might get funding and it could be... So it doesn't necessarily mean the chart's going to be correct. Doesn't mean it's not, but it doesn't mean that it will be. Just letting everybody know that. In the springtime, when the legislators get together, they're going to decide how much money we're going to get. So that's going to change the chart completely.
Right. And is it fair to say that it will also change the chart and our ADA goes down because it has gone down?
No, actually, the... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll let Mr. Hernandez answer that question, sir.
Yes, because the funding that we receive is driven by the ADA that the district receives. And again, depends what actions is taking when we start our new budget process or what is taking place here. And based on the resources available, the initiatives that we continue in the district, that all contributes to what resources we have available on our fund balance.
Okay.
Also, on the budget transportation...
I'm sorry.
As long as the state doesn't do a reduction in funding, we're going to stay with what we're seeing right now. It's going to be basically the same unless we have a drastic amount in attendance. It's going to stay basically what we're looking at right now.
We're hoping that, we know we've been seeing the trend. We peaked down to $13,000, $14,000, but it's $13,900 in ADA. We're down now to $13,600 for $15,000 this year. So hopefully, as the levels off, levels off, we can... So that's our budget being based actually on $13,600. So we're a little bit frightened.
So, okay. You're saying our ADA is about $13,600? So where's that other figure coming from that we got on this, where it shows the $15,000 while we're being compared?
So what ADA means is the actual attendance. $50,000 looks at the enrollment. So when you, when some of these studies, they use enrollment, and like we do it too, when we do our teacher law, we do it based on enrollment because we know that even though a kid's not going to attend, the teacher still needs to be sure that the class size, if all kids were to show up...
So what does the state do it based on, sir, enrollment or...
Well, I bet on the funding, they do that based on the actual kids.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have a question at this time? Ms. Hernandez?
Could you give us the figures on the midpoint for the 2%, 2.5, 3.5?
Zach, Zach.
The midpoint, like, for the 1.5 is $8.25. So for the 2% and on down, what would that be?
So for the...
Yes, I've got. So for the 2.5%, if reading is correct, it's $1,150,000. At 2%, it's $1,100,000.
Correct.
And at 3%, it's $1,600,000. And at 3.5%, it's $1,925,000.
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
And the last, I know we had some questions regarding your economization. So we have Dr. Rodriguez here to expand a bit further regarding the use of the additional positions that we were looking at adding. These positions. Look for Dr. Rodriguez here. Do you mind any clarification?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, everyone. Basically, what we're looking at is we are extending, we're recruiting new students to their third year. Those students, now, will have questions.
And juniors at our school. And that's exciting because we're getting bigger. We were looking at budgeting for this, or asking for this particular new school year, an additional counselor, looking for administrative assistant that would work with both the counselor and the VP, transition safety monitor, someone who would actually help us not only in the school itself, monitoring our kids, because we will have, like I said, over 300 students, but also traveling with the students to Palo Alto College to make sure that the students are actually safe there. Because that's what we have been doing ourselves at the request of the parents. When we started with the school and with the 14, 15-year-olds that the kids are when they come into our school, going to Palo Alto College, some of the parents were very concerned as to who was going to be at Palo Alto College looking after their kids. Because they heard stories of things that happened when we have little kids mingling with adults. So part of the plan that we had was for our teachers to actually travel with the students when the students were at Palo Alto College. And then the three of us, including the counselor, the VP, and myself, were doing it on a rotational basis, but we were going to Palo Alto College. We did have an incident that took place at Palo Alto College where one of our students who was epileptic had a seizure. Palo Alto College does not have a nurse. The only colleges that do have a nurse is if they happen to have dorms and they have a clinic if you have a dorms, like Sigma Muir University or Lady of the Lake. So for Palo Alto College, the nurse is 911. So thankfully, someone was there at Palo Alto College home of our school. The only problem is that because Palo Alto College is so vast, the person was on the other side of Palo Alto College. And by the time it came over, thankfully, the police who work at Palo Alto College were already tending to the student. We had already received some phone calls from some of the kids that were there to kind of watch with the kids. So, and then the other thing is, we needed, it says science, math, English, and engineering, which are K-funded. We're looking for a science teacher. The others have already been put in place. So even though it appears like we need all those teachers that are at the bottom, we really need, well, actually two, which is the engineering teacher, which is being covered with the K funding, and the other one would be a science teacher. So those are the individuals that we're looking for. So I think that is kind of a misconception that we're making the way it's typed up there. But it's a counselor, one administrative assistant, one transition safety monitor, and a science teacher.
Okay. Let me ask you a few questions on that, Mr. Rodriguez. So currently, how many students are currently attending STEM? How many total students?
STEM have about 234 students.
234 total?
Yes.
So the...
Every year, we bring in 120 students. The first year, we will bring in 130, but then the MOU changed at the request of Palo Alto College to change from 130 to 120. So our goal is to bring in 120 students every year. The school is built for a capacity of 520 students. And this is a model that all early college high schools are utilizing, which is to bring in between 120 and 130 students. But in actuality, like I tell everyone, we are one of four early college high schools actually that are in the vicinity close to here. And we're running two major schools. We are actually running a high school and we're running a college. We're running a college. And the college component is the one that really is a challenge. Because we have to be with the students, taking care of their college enrollment, taking care of their TSI scores, which is what really is our focus. Yes, SARS is our focus, but TSI is our focus. And also working with Palo Alto College consistently, meeting with them to make sure that our college courses are aligned to the college courses that they request so that the kids are on the right pathway, which is really the big chunk of time that we're doing. Even though we have our students working very hard and our teachers working very hard, we do have some students that find college challenging. And looking at research and talking to staff here at Harmandale, we're focusing on tutorials, which we do. We're focusing on providing Saturday school. We're focusing on a lot of the academic components to help the students. But because we only have one counselor, what's happening is we're missing out the other component, which is the social, emotional component. Because the kids are stressed and they come with issues just like all kids in high school. So therefore, we need someone who's not going to spend, let's say, 85% of their time doing the schedules and working with the college because it's a constant need with college personnel, including myself and the counselor and the VP. We need someone who's also been focused on the social and emotional component of the kids.
Okay. So right now, you said you have 220 stu...
234.
234. And the enrollment is expected to increase by 120?
We're shooting for 120 freshmen this time.
Okay.
And 120, again, the following year, this will be the next year, correct?
Which would be expected to be about 355 students?
For next year, yes.
For next year, correct. Okay. You're asking for another, an administrative assistant?
Yes.
For the vice principal?
For the vice principal and the two counselors. If we were to get that additional counselor so that they could help with all of the paperwork that is in, you know, in those positions as well. They have no administrative assistant. They do it all themselves. And I understand that as the other high schools that are here in the district, they get administrative assistants. And also, ma'am...
No, that's, okay. So what is the amount that we're looking at if we were to add these positions? Because I don't see a number on here. Can somebody answer that, Mr. Hernandez, please?
The amount for the counselor, the administrative assistant, and transition safety monitor would be...
And a science teacher and engineering teacher, correct?
And on those, the science, math, and English teachers, those are, the salaries are normally around $55,000 is what we use as a budget amount. So that's going to be roughly...
For each one? For each individual one? And so...
And then you're...
Well, you already have, you said math, English. All we need is a science and engineering, correct?
Yes. And the engineering, because the kids that are in that classroom earn K dollars, that basically pays for that position. The science, math, and English, what we've done, since we know we, when we entered into the early college high school model, we knew that we had to complete the model of the four years. So within the budget is what we've got, those positions included, because we have the next cohort that has to come in to make the next class. Because otherwise, if we don't have those teachers, then we can't have a freshman class.
Ma'am Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hernandez?
The one thing I want to just share with the board is that when our board approved for us to have the early college text school and eventually us having a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior class, it was also in the blueprint that we would, again, would have to, again, as a district, know that we were going to increase because every year that we increase more students, it was going to increase more support. One thing that we did, we didn't add them all at one time because it was a piece of them. So what we've done every year, we've come back and added the additional support to be able to provide the curriculum and force work and requirements that there's a need to, again, to meet the ambition and goal of being a senior college student.
Okay. Can you give me an amount or an average, what that would cost us?
Yes, ma'am. If we look at the counselor, administrative assistant, transition monitor, it's approximately $130,000. Because you have one, basically, administrative position and then two paraprofessional positions on the, on those remaining two. And like I said, on the teaching positions, the budget amount that we use for that estimation is about $55,000.
About $110,000 for those two positions?
For the counselor, yes, ma'am. For the teachers, yes.
For the two teachers.
If you do two teachers.
And then all the other positions would be...
Yes, ma'am. The three bullets, the three bullets here, about $130,000. And then if you do each position here for these three, it's $55,000.
So average, $240,000. So average two hundred and forty thousand, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to get an idea. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Rodriguez? Not yet, any other questions?
Yes, Ms. Mancha, you have a question?
Well, okay, so what do they have right now? How many counselors do you have?
One.
And PP?
One.
So you don't have an administrative assistant?
No, they don't have an administrative assistant. I'm the only one that has an administrative assistant.
I'm coming from a super school. So it's like we have a counselor for eight hundred students. Okay, number one. And then what's the ratio, that's that's for staff? What's the ratio in our other high schools, a counselor per student? I mean, what's the ratio? How many students does each counselor have in your high school?
Can you give us an answer on that? So you're asking what is the ratio of each counselor per student at the other?
Right.
At, um, at at like the high school? I I would say the high school, because we have freshman, sophomore, two years and two years. Okay.
Madam Chair, what what I can do, I can get that information for us, and I can give with staff, because right now, I'd be I'd be guessing the numbers, because again, both high schools differentiate and about, they're different, about two hundred and fifty enrollment. But we do have cake counselors in the high schools along with the the counselors that we have there to support. But again, I do wanna share with everyone that this early college high school model is, again, they're not only getting the high school education, but they're also coordinating with the outer community colleges and and TSI and all of the other requirements. And as Mr. as Dr. Rodriguez shared earlier, so we have one counselor right now to take care of all the college information and all the all the dialogue between their schedules and 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 communicating with the outer community college. And one of the biggest concerns and the reason asking for the additional counselors, because eighty-five percent of our our current counselors work is between the university and with the community colleges and back and forth on the college readiness and the T and TSI. And one of the things that Dr. Rodriguez shared earlier was that, again, the social emotional well-being of the students is the reason why they're asking for the additional counselors for the students. If actually with these two counselors, they will be able to take it, they will be able to address, they will be able to address the, uh, our needs for the next, for the for this year and the next year. But again, I'll get that information shared to the board before this tomorrow.
And Madam Chair, I just wanted to add one more comment.
Okay, yes, sir.
My teachers have been going to staff development all over the place here in Harmon Dell because they need with other teachers and so forth. And some of my teachers have mentioned the the myth that is now, you know, prevalent in not just my early college high school, but all early college high schools. And the idea is that our school is comprised basically of all the top kids from the middle schools, that we're only accepting the top kids, which is far from the truth, because what we have to accept according to the blueprint is that middle student who's a.
The mid-range, correct. That was always the understanding, and that was what we.
So so one of the things I wanna mention is, not only are we working, as Mr. Mancha said, with the students at our high school, like they're doing at the super schools, which is an immense amount of work, but our counselor is also working, like I mentioned, with TSI. We have fourteen year olds who are ninth graders that have to pass the TSI exam, which is the entrance exam for students to go into college. Then most of the time, kids take when they graduate from high school, we have to work with our students and look at that data consistently and reach out to students consistently, so that they can start taking these college classes. Because if you can't pass the TSI exam, you're not going to be able to enroll in college classes as a ninth grader in the spring. The counselors at the regular comprehensive high schools all over the city and probably all over the state, they don't have to contend with TSI at the level that we have to contend with. So it's a it's a whole other ballgame. This is a whole other, a whole other monster. And only the people who are involved in the early college high school model can understand exactly all the 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 time consumption that it takes. Because like I mentioned before, we're running two schools. We're running a regular high school and we're running a college high school because of the means that we have to constantly have with college high school.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez? Yes, you have a question?
I said, we think TSI is ten grade. So why are they thinking they're ninth grade?
Because the students start to take the college classes as a ninth grade.
No, not in.
No, no, in early college and high school.
Oh, okay.
Early college.
Then why do we take it with that?
Because what happens is, the law was before, when you were in school, that students were limited in the number of dual credit courses that they can take. In our school, we have in our MOUs that students have to work towards that associate's degree, and it's sixty college hours. So what we do is we start allowing our students to take their their college classes as a ninth grader, so that they have enough time to achieve the sixty hours.
Okay, was there any other questions?
Yeah, I think it was, uh, I think more so my, uh, my questioning. Could you kind of elaborate, Dr. Rodriguez, on the whole idea of, uh, because I know I went over it with Mr. Hernandez yesterday about the, uh, number of teachers that were going with the students to go classes and kind of, uh, share with everyone in terms of, I guess, the master plan in terms of how that's gonna be associated, why it's going in that direction? Were you having the teachers go, um, into the long-term planning for the early college high school?
Absolutely. When we opened up the school, like I mentioned before, the parents were concerned that the little ones are freshman nineteen, fourteen, fifteen years, were going to go to Palo Alto College and kind of be left there. And I told them, you know, let me tell you this, no one goes to the zoo with kids and leaves them there and goes back. We have a field trip every day, two field trips every day with kids. Someone has to go and be there with the students, because again, we don't know what's gonna happen when you just leave them there. So the plan at the beginning was that our teachers, instead of staying behind when all the kids were at Palo Alto College, and have a two and a half hour conference, was for them to go, monitor the kids in the hallway, make sure that the kids got to class, because there's a Starbucks, there's a nice cafeteria, there's a lot of places where they can go and hide, go and monitor the students. And at the same time, the teachers would sit in the classroom, take notes as well, just like the students, come back, and on Fridays, when the students did not have class, the the students would put like an RTI model, which is a response to intervention, so that those six students that needed additional support had a teacher who had sat in class and reminded the students of what what lessons or what activities or what homework or what pages to read, and it helped our students be successful. They they felt more comfortable talking to our teachers. This year, we kind of limited that because this was our second year, and because we grew, we had students going to the college, and then now we have students actually staying at the high school. So therefore, we couldn't send everybody. Some teachers were teaching class and a few teachers were going over there. And this is where the principal, myself, the vice principal, and the counselor were rotating, so that we would go to Palo Alto College and do what the teachers were doing in the first place. What we wanna continue to do is, now that our students are going to be juniors, they're a little older, they understand the system, they know how to get around, they know the expectation, they're more mature. We don't feel that we need to supervise them as much. So therefore, this particular transition safety monitor, we can send one person, so that God forbid that there is an accident, a kid falls or whatever, there's someone there to actually work with the students. But with the freshman, we wanna try and continue the rotation basis that we had with us, the administrators, going and taking care of them. So little by little, we wanna kind of wean them away from us, but we wouldn't always take care of the freshman, because they're the most vulnerable ones, and they're the ones that the parents feel that we should be taking care of. So that's the plan.
And we wanna make sure that the teachers are not at Starbucks or in the library at the same time.
No, exactly.
That they're actually in the classroom doing right, the same, listening to instruction.
And because, again, Palo Alto College was not, uh, according to, uh, FERC, they were not able to give us a lot of data regarding if students were doing well or if they were failing or if they were absent. So every time that the teachers went, the teachers came back with a report from the professors as to who was who was present, they were always present, um, and how the students were actually doing in class. So that was part of the deal. You go and you find information, and here's the evidence that I was in class, because I talked to the professors. And also, when the students would come and talk to them, what's my homework assignment again, what page did I have to read? The teachers knew exactly what had to happen. Now, the integrity of the teachers has been very good.
Okay, and so this is just with the actual freshman, or is it for freshman, sophomore, and the junior?
What we've been doing with freshmen, sophomores, and this year.
Will be, they'll be juniors.
They'll be juniors. But we wanna focus, when the when the freshmen go to college, because they all go at different times, it's a whole bus center rolling around. We wanna focus more on taking care of the freshman, because they're the most vulnerable.
Okay.
So, um, with that mentioned, um, it it was more so, because I was, I guess I had the impression that we had, uh, the transition monitor and the actual teacher were both in the classroom at the same time, probably, or wasn't ever like that?
There's always somebody that is in the hallway, or there are some teachers, there are some professors that don't want the teachers in the classroom. They don't want anyone there listening or watching. So, I mean, that's a third choice, and we can't, you know, force ourselves in. So what we normally do is the teachers actually go and they they would walk the hallways, make sure that the kids were quick to return to the classroom, go into the restroom, because we did have some kids that would rather be in the restroom, walking around, checking out the girls, checking out the boys, instead of really being a cop. So, I mean, we needed someone to monitor that.
Okay, so now we're looking, uh, towards, as you mentioned, just to clarify it, and kind of put it in a simplistic way, is, uh, as these kids are progressing in their academic studies, we're gonna have more students that are maybe at the high school. So we're not necessarily gonna have as many teachers traveling with them, more so just the safety monitors. And we're gonna have the teachers actually back in the classroom with the kids that are in the classroom there, right?
We'll have, let me rephrase that, we'll have more juniors at Palo Alto College. Okay, we'll have more juniors at Palo Alto College. We'll still have the safety monitor checking on them, like I said, there's no nurse in case something happens. We still have the sophomores, we will still have the freshmen that will be going to college. And when they go, we will either send, again, the safety monitor, because it'll be at different times. One of us from the administration team will go, and if there's a teacher or two that's actually able to go based on how the schedule is fit, we will send them, because the place is, the place is huge, I mean, the place is very big. And we wanna make sure that someone is in close proximity, uh, making sure that the kids are there and they know that we're there in case something happens. We've told this to the parents, and the parents are expecting us to take care of the kids.
Okay. Uh, and as far as the transition safety monitor, is this person gonna be like CPR certified? I think that would be very important for.
Great idea. Well, we go through the trainings that are required, um, but that's an excellent idea for that person to also be certified.
I mean, because I would think if, for me, safety monitor would make sure that that child is safe, and then maybe have like a first aid pack with them at all times.
That's one thing that we do. Our nurse has always provided a a little pack with a, you know, like a like a first aid pack. Um, they know how to use the EpiPen, because, you know, in case it gets stung by a bee or whatever, those students that happen to be urgent. Um, they know some safety, but just to make sure that they are certified in that, that's an excellent idea, yes.
Yeah, I think I'd want more information on what the criteria would be for a transition safety monitor. That definitely would be something that I would want more information also, before we make a decision. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, does anybody else, anybody?
And again.
Yes, Dr. Rodriguez?
The student counselor ratio, like rates of high schools, is one to four hundred and fifty. There's a lead counselor who has enough student load, so there's an extra lead counselor, and then there's the other side of the high school, one counselor.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes what we have, uh, as a follow-up for this budget board session. So we'll gather the information and then bring more information for the next board meeting, which will be the budget hearing and then, uh, the official adoption of the budget. Once the budget's adopted, again, just like any budget, can always be amended. There are further changes that need to be made.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, I appreciate it. Okay. So. Give it just a moment. Okay. The time now is eight thirty-four, and this meeting has been adjourned. Thank you.